Yeah, they are ready.
Right.
I mean, it's important work going on, I know.
I'm hoping.
Welcome to our work session for September 1st, 2022. We're gonna start with a review of the council agenda.
Whatever I can hear.
I think Dana has by now probably gotten everybody to correct it minutes. We had a glitch in one of the sets of minutes in there. We'll have our normal reports. We have no proclamations this month. And then the first item that we'll have is the public hearing that was scheduled for the Kane Studio, both the public hearing and the variance thing, that application's been withdrawn, but because it's been advertised, we'll open and close the hearing. And again, no action or anything on that, because it's been withdrawn. And then Mike, you want to talk about the revised Cedar Grove, I say it's a Cedar Grove thing? That's the next couple items?
Nathan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nathan.
Evening, Mayor and Council, and everyone who has chosen to give us their time tonight. I will not go through all of the details and read the staff report word by word, because I wrote that staff report, and it is a lot of words. What I will say is, this case is a really good example of our process working, and of the applicants taking the advice of Planning Commission and staff and the meetings from council to heart, and adapting the proposal to be more in compliance with our comprehensive plan, with our zoning, and with the overall desires of the community. I'm gonna grab a copy. So, I'm not gonna go through all the deficiencies of the old plan, other than to say, this is what it used to look like. You can see sort of a cul-de-sac at the top, you can see on-site open space, and forty lots up top. So what the petitioner has done, after a spirited planning commission meeting, we'll say, we have removed all the open space from being on people's lots, which was probably the most contentious of all the variances that they asked for. And so that actually, it's no longer needed, and they'll be removing the request for that variance. So where staff is very, very happy about that one. They reduced their lot count from forty to twenty-eight, okay? They've also added additional open space inside going into the development, and we have a trail network that goes all throughout with trailheads on these places. The developers put a pavilion. I know Ruby talked about having some sort of community, actual park gathering space where we'll have a pavilion in the green space on this side of the lot. Those are the biggest things I want to hit on. We also have less pavement, if you look at the previous one, that was the one Ruby personally. We've got a lot of pavement up here going through and out here, so that's sort of all, it's all gone, and just loops around. We do have a connection to the adjoining parcels, so for future development, there's easements, so they can actually connect to one another. That's a big thing for us, to add inter parcel connectivity. I've been working at a few places in Fulton County, that is something you don't see a lot, so I'm personally getting really good when we have that, and I'm sure we can force that. Again, this was a project that was already planted and aided by Fulton County, and so, given that fact, and all the change that we needed from the planning commission, this is probably the best we can get. And that's, it's pretty good, all things considered. It's a coherent project, large lots. It doesn't look like Phase Two is just tapped on to Phase One. We have all the open space that they're needing for Phase Two throughout the whole project, because I'm only asking for rezone just the back. So staff's recommendations have changed from all denial to all approval for all the ones that they're gonna be asking for. You know, it goes without saying, and I put, I told the petitioners this, I put this in our report, you know, this would not be approved today if it just came in from scratch. You know, we don't allow this type of suburban-ish development in Chedoochee Hills, I almost said South Pole, in Chedoochee Hills. But again, given all the constraints of the property, given it was half-done already, we're quite pleased with how this has turned out, considering what we've been, what we started with, and where we're at today. Any specific questions, I'm happy to answer those.
The infrastructure?
Yes.
Is already in to provide all those houses?
For the first phase, yes. Streets are there, yeah, the pipes are there. These are all gonna have to be on septic in the back, so these are all one-acre lots in the back, so large enough for their own septic systems.
And by rezoning it from, what is it, removing it from rural to what?
Mixed-use hamlet in the back.
Mixed-use hamlet.
Yes.
I can just, I can just tell you, you know, when it comes to the zoning, you know, I like a lot of the zoning. It seems like since we've had some hot button issues here lately with the movie thing and everything else, it seems like the more we look at the zoning, it's like, if it doesn't work here, we can do it this way, or do it this way, or do it this way. There's always some, so the citizen in general, and myself, is having a hard time figuring out, what exactly is that zoning?
Totally understand.
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, it does.
Okay, because if it doesn't fit this description, maybe we make it fit this one.
Yeah.
Maybe we make it fit this one.
I get that. Again, you know, and this is really a unique case, because we were dealing with, again, a project that was already planted under Fulton County, so they had half of this was like this. And the only other option with us would have been to keep it rural, where they would have got three lots in the back. So the options were three lots, or work with all of us to fit into our zoning as best we can here. But again, like I said, this is not the type of project that would be allowed if you just had a clean slate and were coming to develop.
But there's separate phases, so explain the difference, why they would only have, if it's considered. The way I look at that is two pieces of property.
Yes, correct.
And when you look in here, it talks about adjoining those two pieces of property.
Correct.
Also, so if it's two separate pieces of property, why are they only allowed three?
Because in the rural district, the minimum lot size is twenty acres. So because this is, I believe, sixty-nine in the back, you would get three lots out of this.
So regardless of it being planted with Fulton County years ago?
Only the front part.
Our new, correct.
The front was planted.
Okay, so moving forward with our zoning, they would only get three?
If it stayed rural.
Because I, because I hear well, it was planted way back then.
Yeah.
And then our, it's kind of the same thing they did with the village up there, they talked about the village, it was planted in what, '07, '08?
Right.
So that tells me, when that village does come back down the street again?
Yeah.
Whatever Fulton County told them, does a whole water.
Well, what Fulton County did in the front, they're getting that, they have that by right.
Correct.
So the challenge was, how do we get them in the back to be in as much compliance with our zoning as possible, given the other constraints that they're working with? And so this is the end result of working with the planning commission with staff, to be as in compliance as they can, given that this project was basically half-done by Fulton County. So like I mentioned, if you had a clean site today, you wouldn't get a suburban development like this. You would have to, it would have to be a lot more dense, lots smaller lots.
Rick, so what you're saying is, about being half-done, the front side being done?
Yes.
There's only half the project?
Correct.
Okay, and then the backside?
That's what we're focused on, yes.
You're looking at it as a continuation of the original project?
Correct. But the way that we designed it too, like I mentioned, it really feels like one project, and as to everyone's credit as well, that it doesn't feel like we've got one type of development up here, and it looks completely different in the back. If you look at the way it was before, what you really would have had is big lots in the front, and cramming it as much as you can in the back, and it would have been very obvious that it was done in separate time, the way it is now, but what it is currently proposed, it's gonna be a lot more coherent. It's gonna be a lot more pleasant driving through there.
Okay, and when you talk about moving the land space off the site, I was trying to find that chart in here, you said it's identified?
They're not doing that anymore, right?
They're not asking for the variance to have open space on people's planted lots.
Correct, they're talking about having it off?
Correct, so what they've done is, off-site is up here on Phase One, so again, they're only rezoning the back part, and they've taken property from Phase One, and counting that as the open space for Phase Two. Currently, as planted, all of this property is on these lots, so these lines go back, they're taking it off the lots and counting as the open space for Phase Two.
They're replanning it, making those lots smaller, moving that to build space.
And does that include lots in Phase One?
Yes, they are changing the lots.
They're not rezoning the lots in Phase One, but they are taking this property off lots in Phase One.
Because nobody lives near it.
Correct.
And adding trails?
Yes.
What did the planning commission say?
Planning Commission denied all of the requests based on the previous site plan. So this site plan was not seen by planning commission, but we took the recommendations from planning commission, and, you know, the staff recommendations, and worked with the petitioners to come up with this revision that is now going forward.
And they'll be seeing that in their upcoming meeting, will have that recommendation before we vote on it in the next council meeting.
That's your guys' choice, if you so choose.
Yeah.
And see, back to the words from somebody in the city, it may have been you that wrote this, or Mike, but as you're going through, you know, writing down each of the questions and answers, whatever, it says, "We should not vary from the vision just for the convenience and financial gain of the developer."
That's true.
Well, so my question is, I mean, when you, when you own a piece of property, and you have topography issues, and you have this and that?
Yeah.
Does that really fall on us to help fix that in a certain extent? Because, I mean, you bought the property. I mean, if there's a mountain there, I mean...
I would say, yes, it does.
Okay.
But that would be, in my opinion...
And why would that be?
Well, you know, you're gonna have to take a look at all the situations at hand, if you want to, you know, help someone in the community, do this or that, that would be your, you have the power to do so. But we're not just gonna take property and give developers free rein to do whatever they want, without being in compliance with their zoning, which is why we gave the petitioners such strong pushback on their original proposal. Like I said, it went from forty to twenty-eight lots, so they lost a lot of money, not being able to sell those. So this plan is...
And I hear you, but that's not my concern. My concern is for, you know, the way we filled out, and how citizens look at it, and how I look at it. And I just, I just find it, you know, like sometimes, you know, the problems of piece of property evolved, those are yours.
That's true.
And, you know, I get it.
Yeah.
I get it, I can imagine being, you know, trying to help somebody out, but it seems like as you go through this to the original time, there's eight or nine no's, and then we sit down and we, somehow we, with our zoning, we turn it into eight or nine yeses.
I would say that is correct.
And I'm just wondering, what is the process, what does the zoning mean? That's what, that's what I have to explain to the citizens.
Right.
If you gotta have a hundred acres, and you got sixty-nine or whatever?
Right.
I go, right there, there's strike one, how do you recreate this?
So, I mean, I wrote all this in the report, so I know what was in there, honestly. But, you know, again, what we're trying to do is, given all the constraints, having me in as much compliance as is reasonable. I mean, obviously, you're the council, you have freedom to deny it if you so choose. I mean, their options would be, keep it as rural and get three lots, or they'd have to go, given the infrastructure concerns on this whole property with the septic and the lack of sewer there, you know, being an actual residential hamlet the way our zoning intends is, it's either unlikely or incredibly expensive. So I don't know if that would be actually feasible, which would be a reason for the council to say, hey, you know, let's work with you and get something going there, as opposed to not having anything at all.
The biggest thing is that the front half right now, lots to the edges, is owned by Fulton County, they can start building that tomorrow. And what they've done here is improve?
Correct.
What's in the front, and the trade is some stuff in the back, and some parkland coming to the city. And yeah, they just have to weigh the pros and cons of those two things.
We're certainly, staff is certainly happy with the open space in the front, being open space now and not being on any of everyone's lots, which, you know, I mean, this is going down the street, anyone's gonna kind of ride their bike and walk through those trails, so that's definitely gonna be an advantage for everyone.
Well, I like the concept.
Yeah.
I'm just, so let me ask you this, if I've got two hundred acres, I'm strapped with one house per twenty acres, so if I tell you I'm gonna build a neighborhood, can I cut it up and sell it?
Like this? No.
No?
No.
You could totally give a residential hamlet.
You could do ten, twenty-acre lots, but otherwise, in the rural district, you could do ten, twenty-acre lots, or you could rezone and do something much more grand than that.
Grand is my strong sport. You could do a residential hamlet or a mixed-use hamlet on two hundred acres.
Right.
Well, that tells me we probably need to have some discussions on some of the zoning, because that's what I'm hearing from some of the, some of the landowners out there.
Yeah.
Why can this guy do this if he wants to build a neighborhood that I can't?
That's...
And I get it.
That's actually on your agenda for a later discussion episode.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Nathan.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Is there any sewage at all?
All septic.
It's all septic, correct?
All septic.
Yeah.
So there's no sewage, okay. All right, okay.
Nathan, I just want to thank you and Mike and the Planning Commission for working through this, and coming up, and the applicant coming up with a much better design. Looks great.
Well, thanks. And the petitioners are here, do you have any questions for them?
And you did the first phase, correct?
Yeah.
No, you did not.
Yes.
Okay, well, one of my big concerns with the first phase was they just, well, I'll talk to you afterwards, it's no big deal.
All right, the next one is the pouring license. Dana, is that you?
Yes. This is an application, so it also has a location, only the restaurant in Serenby, and this would be a second location at the pool. It would be actually a, like a little more main kitchen sort of thing that is stationary at the one address, with service, restaurant and alcohol service for the pool, as well as... The applicant is here, anybody have any questions? It's been reviewed by the city attorney. I got a little bit extra review at this stage by the fire marshal. This is the plan, some other things that the court should all stack, and it's that reference.
Right, so just another restaurant in the location, basically, next to the pool?
Yes, yeah.
All right, do you have any questions about this? That's why they're doing, I think, is a food truck, right, so it's for rural?
Well, part of the problem is, we didn't, initially, the applicant did approach wanting to do something just service for the pool, but we don't have a license in our alcohol order that allows for that. So it's something that would have to be public as well, so this was something that would allow them to operate more like a restaurant.
Cool, all right. Next up is the new business items and the actual approval of the concept plan. It would just be this? It's the same conversation, right? Nothing, nothing else to do but that. And then the next one, Mike, is you, right?
Yeah, the next one is a proposed rezoning of one hundred and ten acres to the west of Serenby. Most of the land is west of Watkins Road, it's kind of an L shape, and it connects up to Hutchinson Ferry Road. There's about twenty acres on the east side of Watkins Road that connects it to the existing Serenby Hamlet. The applicant is proposing ten lots in that major L-shaped area, ten acre lots that would be built on, and then also subdividing the open space in there to, into roughly seven acre chunks surrounding those. There's also a road that runs in there and serves those, serves those lots. On the east side of Watkins Road, there are two existing rural lots, and then one is just kind of an infrastructure lot, it's kind of, it holds Serenby Road that feeds some of the, some of the farmettes that were created back in 2014 or 15. And again, that's what connects it to the existing Serenby Hamlet. They've also asked for a variance to reduce or basically eliminate the buffers, partially because the road runs through what would be buffer on the west side of the road, and then on the east side, where those two existing lots are. They want those owners to be able to continue treating those lots with all the same rules that you treat property in the rural district, because that's where they were created. They're not proposing any changes there, they just want those to be treated like regular rural lots. And so the hundred and fifty-foot buffer there would impinge upon their ability to build in the regular places, but by the same token, there's no change in the character, whether it's rezoned or not, the character of those lots would remain the same, whether there's buffer or not, if we treat it like, like ours. So that doesn't really represent any change. And we have the applicant here, do you have questions for them?
Mark, is that, where will the cut be to come into the road? Will be on Watkins Road, or another cut on Hutchinson Ferry?
Yeah, they're, the entrance is on both roads.
On both roads.
So the road, yeah, will connect all the way through.
This, by the way, too, just so that we're clear on this one, from a scheduling perspective, it's a first read, right?
That's correct.
And with the first read, we'll have a recommendation due from planning commission before we act on anything regarding, do you want to...
There's actually not an additional cut at all.
So it's all on Hutchinson Ferry?
Excellent, I'm sorry, good point, that's right. So it could, this road, the road connects to, so those farmettes I mentioned on the, on the east side, connect with a road called Serenby Road, connects also on the other side of Watkins Road. And the road serving these lots actually connects into that road, so there's not a new entrance on Watkins Road, it connects to Serenby Road after it enters that farmette community that already exists.
So the cut is on Serenby Road?
That's right.
Carrying traffic back towards?
That's right, eastern.
Okay, not towards Hutchinson Ferry, not towards Watkins Road?
That's right, my apologies, that's right. No worries.
I have a question about the, the open space on the L-shaped lots. So I need a little bit more information. It looks like the houses, the one acre for the house is outlined, and then the open space around that is, so when someone buys, say, parcel F3, are they buying both of those? Are they connected?
If so, the previous farmettes, right, we would sell a five-acre lot, an entire five-acre lot, and only allow someone to go with one house. Under current zoning, that's not possible, so we totally understand that, and so it could pivot it, and instead of selling like a five-acre lot or a seven-acre lot, or only selling somebody one acre, so they'll buy a single one-acre lot, and there'll be a conservation easement around it. What we're looking at is if somebody has a horse, right, if we could say, we can allow you to use two acres of pasture for your horse, and the conservation, conservation around the one acre lot.
So I think, which refers to the old zoning, you know, you're talking about without a rezoning, right, rural, if you had left it rural, it would have had a five-acre lot, right?
Right.
A one-acre lot, right. So, so the original, when they originally, when I first heard about this property, and they're thinking of the property, they were thinking farmette, before the zoning was changed last October. So they were looking at doing farmettes, and then the zoning changed, they couldn't do all those farmettes, lots that they wanted to, and, and so now, to get all those lots, they need to do the rezoning, and they're still taking the farmette approach, right, to how the lots are laid out, but...
So I guess my confusion is, after hearing the planning commission work on, and you guys worked on the Cedar Grove, asking them to separate the conservation easement in the back from the property lots that were being sold, why would this be different than here?
They're not gonna own the conservation easement, so they won't own the land, they will not own the land that the conservation easement...
That was the same case with the other one, too, and we still require that that be separate, right?
Right, so there, there won't be lot lines separating the buildable lot, the one-acre buildable lot, from the other seven, whatever.
To create apples to apples, it would be, if we were coming forward and saying, we're proposing ten lots, and putting conservation easement on land that a person owns, owns ten acres. We're gonna sell somebody one acre, they're not gonna own ten acres. So what changed was, if, then you would have to change it if you brought, where you said, we just wanna sell someone ten acres, so they can build one house, and then we're gonna put a conservation easement on nine acres of their land. We're gonna sell somebody one acre, and put conservation, a conservation easement on the land around that one acre. It's no different than the change that was made to what Cedar, to what you want to do. We're selling, and we're moving the development rights from the property, so instead of like doing something where we could have theoretically done more density on this, so with a hundred and ten acres, we could put a hundred and ten homes of thirty percent on three, thirty of these acres, right, and leave seventy percent green space. So instead of doing that, we're gonna move the development rights into what Serenby currently is, and continue to densify what is Serenby, and remove the development rights from the remaining property.
So will the occupants of that one acre have use of any of that nine acres at all? And as far as horses?
We're going out with a conservation easement, so like saying, like you have use of it, like have trails, like have a horse that could potentially farm, just like if anybody like on the current, and then you can do in the current, it's a conservation easement.
So who gets credit for that TDR or that conservation piece?
It does sound different, the TDR...
It's no different, okay.
You move the TDRs into Serenby.
Okay, but Serenby gets the TDR for that?
Just like in Serenby currently, like you move them off of your organic farm or the passage that are around the stables.
So, but is that public land, then? It's different between open space and conservation easement. I understand that maybe the resident living there could put a horse there, but is it public land?
Not public, meaning city-owned.
Not, not city-owned.
The ownership is a good one, and it's not clear to me.
It's not clear.
That's why I was under the impression that maybe they did want to sell the seven acres and the one acre to the same, the same group.
It'll probably be owned, like in the current, where like an HOA will own it and a conservation easement. So public is a, is a complicated word, so like none of Serenby's green space is public property. It is owned by the HOA with a conservation easement on it, but it's not public property. It's restricted to the people who live and pay, who want its association with Serenby. Serenby lets people, the HOA lets people access to green space, but it is, it is owned by the Serenby homeowners association.
We'll, we'll work on that.
Absolutely, because as an FY, the seventy percent of green space in the city's hamlet is not public. Public property.
Right, right, there's no requirement for public access on, on open space.
I mean, for example, if it's a... But with a farm, you wouldn't expect it to be public, right? But like trail systems and things like that are accessible, right?
Organic farms, like apples.
I have a tiny, little side issue that, it, is that, I personally don't think they should be marketed as farmettes, because now, under our new zoning, a farmette is meant to mean a twenty-acre parcel, not something less. And I understand that the part that's in white was already, the concept plan was already approved administratively before our zoning changed, was that?
No, no, nothing was approved before the zoning change. So it's a blink switch, it's a blink...
I'm not talking about theirs, I'm talking about...
The middle part.
The L, the middle part, that they're calling farmettes, and there's a gate in front of...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's not part of this project.
That was right.
But that was proved before, so the farmette size was legitimately smaller.
That's right.
But now, under our new zoning, you really couldn't call these farmettes, because they're not twenty-acre?
Well, they're not farmettes under the zoning, if they choose to use the word in their marketing, that's...
Okay.
We started, we started using farmettes as the marketing word for the city added in zoning, so we've been using it as a marketing word since 2012.
That's true, those six farmettes on the east side were done before a farmette existed in the zoning, they called the farmettes then. They were minor subdivision lots, from the zoning, in the zoning game.
If it makes you feel better, we can change this into a state lot here, instead of state lot, and we're happy to change that on the application.
So my other question is, I know going down Watkins Road, on that west side, where those existing farmettes are, there's a gatehouse, and I didn't think we were supposed to have gates, so I'm not sure if that's the access to this new, this new extension of Serenby, would that gate still be there? Because these are not legitimately, I don't under, if it's a legitimate farmette, the purpose of not having, of having a gate is to keep the animals inside, right? Or one of the reasons, but...
Right, right.
But otherwise, it's a gated community, and I didn't think we're supposed to do it.
Under the old zoning, gates were allowed in farmettes. You're allowed that, you might, you do, still some of those changes, but I think you might be right about the new, not allowing them at all.
You have two access points, so there's a Hutchinson Ferry access point that does have a gate. This, you, the access point on Cedar Road mitigates an additional cut on Watkins Road, so like you are trying to be thoughtful and not have an additional cut at access point on Watkins Road.
Understood, still.
It would be, yeah, if, I mean, you could leave the gate open forever, it'd be a physical gate that exists, and just can't open forever.
Another question, the two lots on the east side, um, those are currently owned and they want to join into the Serenby zoning, is that right?
They signed off on, yeah.
They signed off, okay.
Anything else?
The signatures will be a party package next month.
Moving to the conservation easement.
Sorry.
When does that land go into the, what do you call it?
In this sense, it would be pretty immediate.
Pretty immediate?
Yeah, so in Serenby, um, this is a, like, I feel like we talk about this and it's always hard to track it, but effectively would be the toll, would mean the build on seventy percent of lots is when you apply the concrete easement. Here, because there's such a smaller amount of lot to land ratio, we would do it immediately.
Because you're plating all the lots right up front, right, yeah, it's easier.
This is a, an interesting example of how moving T D Rs actually should be straddled more rural because we could literally do a hundred and ten homes just for like theoretically, right? We could do a hundred and ten homes right here on thirty acres and then save seventy percent of it. So we are opening ten instead of a hundred and ten and then moving the remaining development rights into, well, like, into Stella or reserving it for A five.
I get that, but to me, it's like we're taking this huge chunk of which are L and we're kind of slowly.
Can you tell me the last time y'all put some in the, the last number I got was a hundred and thirteen acres? Is that gone up?
It's in conservation easement.
Correct.
We haven't hit seventy percent of Motto yet, so we haven't had to put additional land in the conservation easement. But to be clear, we have every time we come forward and plat a lot, we have to identify the land that no longer has development rights and saves. So we have far more than a hundred and thirteen acres that has been preserved. We just haven't.
In plat, yeah.
In plat, we haven't hit a seventy percent threshold, but then you put the conservation easement on. But we have had to demonstrate far more than a hundred and thirteen acres.
So what would you say that number is if it's not in there yet? That hasn't been planted?
So we've sold, we have sold five hundred lots, right? Um, that, so it's probably closer to like round numbers if we can confirm exact numbers with our engineers.
Yeah, I mean, if you're just in the ballpark.
You're at like two fifty.
Okay, so we've got about half of it done and the other half is still waiting to be done. If we're sitting at one thirteen.
Right.
Okay.
And, and the reason for that to remind everyone is once you have the conservation easement, it gets a lot harder. You're having to use a utility or a sidewalk by like two feet and that two feet is already in the conservation easement. You don't, you don't have that flexibility. And so in this, if you're actively developing, two feet matters. So it's, it's not about ninety-nine percent of the land is the conservation. It's the one percent that's around the border of the edges of the lots.
And, and Rick, Rick has made clear several times in meetings that the plat restrictions are the equivalent of the belt and the easements are the suspenders that neither one lets the bands fall down.
And, and I understand that that makes a lot of sense in the mixed use Serenby hamlet because it's so dense. Here where it looks like you have more flexibility, I'm wondering, would it be a hardship if we suggested a condition? I got echo, sorry. If we suggested a condition that as each lot is sold and built at that time, the remainder of that lot be put in conservation at that time? Would that be a hardship?
No.
Okay. And then I also wanted to ask about the buffer of the road going in from Hutchinson Ferry. So, um, I see there's not much space in why you want to request that, that buffer be removed. And the white space on the map that's not in this application, is that part of Serenby already? Do we need permission from those landowners to, um, consider that buffer to be removed?
So the, because the farmettes are an interesting component of, are they, are they part of Serenby or, or not? So they, they legally from a zoning perspective are not part of the hamlet zoning, but all of them fall under the Serenby covenant or HOA covenant and they're all paying HOA easement. So every, if you ask any of, anybody in the white, if they were part of the Serenby hamlet, they'd say yes. From a zoning perspective, so like right now the zoning, we could pull every hamlet, we could pull every farmette. We could have everybody sign an application to say if we wanna become part of the Serenby hamlet from the zoning perspective. And nothing would change about any of the farmettes because we've already removed their developer rights. We've already restricted that every person.
Just tell my kids, right?
To build one house.
Let me, effectively.
So it's a technicality, it's a technicality.
It's a zoning technicality.
They're all, they all fall under the Serenby covenants. Each of those land parcels at the time of trading will record it to be in perpetuity as part of the Serenby HOA. The Serenby HOA maintains that gravel road and all of that access and everybody pays the HOA easement. So Lori, I don't know if I answered your question, but it's okay. And they all know it's happening.
Steve, I'm just letting you finish your sixteen.
Yeah, and everybody, all of those farmette owners know that it's happening and would gladly sign something saying yes.
I, I think I would just like to see that since it is a little squirrely. It sounds like everybody's on board with it, but as ownership changes, you know, just to have that recorded in the, in the land that they were okay with that?
Recommend conditions for the planning commission for your next meeting.
Okay.
We'll, we'll put that in there. I had, I had considered something I haven't talked to you well.
It is two, because one, there's one, just for record, follow two lane numbers. This lane number, this point eight reversal is in the, and he's already signed something saying that it's happening.
I'm thinking from Hutchinson Ferry on down though, so F ten, F nine. Oh, you're talking about the white part, yeah. A eleven, so it's just A eleven, gotcha, okay, okay.
Cause A two has already signed something to be part of, because the road headed in towards the cross.
Steve, you have the point you want to elaborate?
I just want, or if I could, we're working on the document on open space that will go along with this in the city. And on the maps they're going to get, there is an acre, about a little over acre, there's acres that are identified on all our plots.
On the plats, yeah.
That's right. Now, you know, the problem is we wanna make sure that all lots are sold or that has to be moved. There's rock or something, so we get that's, that's why we keep it there. But, you know, it's, it's identified, so the city isn't told that.
We don't give a plat unless, unless it, it adds up to the right numbers. That's, that's a fact and, and Rick has been very clear on that in the course part.
We have two maps, we have the one that's always been on the city website for Serenby, which is the conservation easement map that we've been able to see.
Turn your, turn your mic, it's on.
Sorry, I was saying we have two, we already, we have the conservation easement map that's been updated by Serenby that is on, that Robbie puts on the city website. So we, so as this goes with these, we'll just update that map too. So we have two going, right? The open space that's not yet in conservation and the conservation easement map. And that'll make it, I think, clearer to a lot of folks what that looks like.
Because as we get through Stella, the acre acres we're talking about, if we get through Stella, what we've identified, if we get through Stella, the neighborhood's land that everyone's seen, there will be acre acres of green space. We have identified acre acres that will protect the city notes out.
And those are all full of.
Which are big, big numbers, it starts to get, you have big numbers.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, I was just curious. I, I just know the last time I heard it was a hundred and thirteen, I was just wondering if that number had moved, that's all. Just curious, just a question, I have curiosity. Of the eight hundred acres that y'all are setting aside and it's already there and y'all are planning forward, how much of that is usable space? All right, that's, that's a, a big question, kind of.
Right.
As far as buildable.
Buildable?
Yes. Most of it?
Most of it, most of the eight hundred acres we could build on.
Okay.
Yeah. You, you know, cause Serenby doesn't have, like, we're not at the Chatham Beach River. We've got a couple of streams, but we're not, like, we're not heavily in any wetland area. We have some wetlands, but not. You're, you're sub, you're sub of that eight hundred, you're probably sub fifty acres. Though we couldn't, once you aggregate it, then we wouldn't be able to build on.
I got you, I see the strain buffers. Okay, thank you.
So it's not.
Sure.
Meaning we could build on a lot of it.
Okay, well, thank you.
So if without chattel zoning, it would be clear cut.
Right.
Sea of roots forever.
Y'all wouldn't clear cut it?
No, no, not us, but Serenby, like, there's another.
Go against everything you do? Everything around us. All right, any other questions about this? And again, we'll have, we'll have another opportunity to talk about it and we'll have the feedback from the planning commission and all the rest of that discussion and a staff recommendation. Next time we, we are back to talk about this. Next up are the special use permits for the school. Uh, is that you Mike too?
That's me. Um, I just noticed the, the first bold line there in the memo mentions a variance. There's no variance attached to this one. Um, this is just a special use permit for the, for the schools. So, um, Active Academy is an active school in, um, in Serenby. They have had a home in Phase Two, the Grange for, for quite some time. That property received its use permit, um, before we started using the word special, like in two thousand and twelve. Um, so they got operated school there, it was different at the time of Montessori school, different owner, different applicant. Um, but that's where they've been, been operating. Um, they're expanding quite a bit. Uh, they'd identified a, a piece of property on Promfield Road some time ago that they, um, uh, want to turn into their main campus and, um, that property is part of this application. Um, in the meantime, they are growing quickly and they have, um, five other temporary spaces that don't have that zoning, um, uh, the, the permit needed. So, um, so those are included here as well. So you can see there's a map with some red circles on it, um, in here after all of the legal descriptions um, that highlight where all those, uh, this one doesn't have any red circles on it. Up there you can see a map with red circles. Do you have red circles on your map? Okay, great, I got the one, I got the, I got the, the version before we, um, we fixed that. We had a little PDF technical problem, but we, we, we got it fixed, I guess, before the printing. Um, the, anyway, you can see the, the circles on that map. One of them indicates the existing, uh, campus, which is the one in the lower right. Um, the proposed new campus is, um, uh, about halfway down on the left, not the far left, but the, the bigger piece there. Um, that's the, uh, the campus is going to be their permanent campus if you all approve the, uh, special use permit. To the left, they have a site for a couple trailers on an existing gravel parking lot. And then, um, in, in Motto, the kind of downtown area of Motto, Motto One Office Building and two of the Lib Works Buildings, um, um, right next door. Um, uh, individual classrooms, one in each of those buildings. So there are, um, three classrooms there. And then finally up in, uh, in Phase One, at the corner of, where the Hill Restaurant is, at the corner of Selvern Way and Selvern, um, where the Serenby Development Office is, there's a space that had, one's been, one's been the photography center, it's been a community room and, uh, they're proposing to use that room as a classroom. I don't know if it's a formal classroom or just a gathering space, but it's for the older kids. Um, and, uh, I believe we have the half finished.
Yep.
Yeah, so if you have questions about.
One, one comment I wanna make too, and this is one of these places where, you know, the, the progress of the zoning in the plats is very specific to what's being built and, and permissions being asked for on a particular day. But if you've been in Serenby anytime for the last probably fifteen years, you know, the maps that they've got up by the hill or the maps that you get in the sales office have always shown the school and the location that they're building the school. So this is not a surprise to anybody. It's, it's been a plan from, from forever. Uh, there has been a change in the way that we do the zoning that requires a special use permits a couple of years ago, but the point is, you know, this is not a surprise to anybody, I guess, I just wanna make that clear. And John is here, if, if anybody has questions for me.
How many students you got right now?
Uh, a hundred and ninety right now.
Good, good. It's a great little school. That's a need out here.
Mike, um, I don't know if this needs to be corrected under the narrative description for the special use permit. It says, uh, some, there are temporary, temporary trailers spaced twenty-five feet in parallel are scheduled to be removed June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two? Does that date need to be changed? Do I get that?
That's in their application material, we had.
So when is that scheduled to be removed?
When you get it back.
When, when, twenty-three, that's the.
That's the whole question.
So what, what is the process to get in the school? Is that just any, any, is it set up kind of like a private school or?
It is a private school.
It's a, it is a private school. One thing that Jonathan speaks of is twenty-five, currently twenty-five percent of the students are held for scholarship-based which is being funded actually, it's a few dollars, tax dollars. So it's a really, really large, um, scholarship base at the school and twenty-five percent of need phase in the school goals, but that's a certain chattels community.
Or a lot of kids from outside of Serenby.
Whether it be like Serenby, a need phase or within the chattels so that the school is serving as a, a chattel school to not only, which Serenby being part of chattels.
The, the, the main goal was that the two things that we do, we take our private school portion in line with the public school first profile and then our bylaws state that twenty-five percent of our families, um, are designated for scholarship, need-based families. So that's what the great category is built there. Uh, that's, that's been in place.
What's your, um, projected enrollment for the next ten years?
It's targeted to cap out about four hundred and fifty students.
And that campus has a, a series of buildings in that location, right? Upper school, lower school, that, I don't know that that's a nomenclature.
There's a toddler, a primary, uh, gym, the leader, and a high school as well, of sixteen five total.
I noticed a reference to overcoated parking spaces of sixty lots. Where would those be?
Two, uh, older stuff, parking.
Parking.
There's a present stage.
Yeah, you guys close at seven?
For the, the snow club is now.
Forty, okay.
Um, that's been on, that is on, on land that they have in here.
Ten minutes is fine.
But we would be like all things in Serenby and the way.
Four oh seven, seven.
It's shared parking.
It's your bike.
When you have, like, on the weekends, when you have restaurants and shops or the year and the school's not open, that parking to the school, even Monday and Friday, can be parking for like weekend activities so that we don't end up with just sea of parking lots and chattels, um, to be dedicated in single use.
The other thing too is a lot of the kids are gonna walk and ride their bikes as they do now.
Parking is really the key difference.
Right, so roughly sixty-five percent of students reside in the community. The location of this campus is really part of the community, so, um, they have a hundred, two hundred bike rides.
But if you're successful ten years from now, that could mean two hundred students come from outside the community. So I'm wondering if they would be coming from Hutchinson Ferry, if there would be any plans for a school bus? I don't know, cause it's a private school, I don't know how that would work. But I, I don't think they'd be driving through Motto, um, from the outside of Serenby. So I was just wondering what that could bring.
There's gonna be a lot of access points. So this school is served by two access points coming off of, I mean, from the Coweta County side. You can come in from Atlanta Noon Road side, you can come in from Hutchinson Ferry.
Um, the. Yes, ten minutes.
And I mean, if you, if you're in Serenby on, there are a hundred and ninety kids going through the neighborhood right now at multiple locations. They probably barely notice.
No, right.
And then the gentleman, yes.
John, I'd like to thank you for that, cause I've got a lot of educators in my family and it's, it's something we needed out here. So I really appreciate that.
Why don't you sit down with me and walk in detail?
I've coached kids for years, believe me, I've done my fair share. But I can just tell you, uh, it's something that's always needed out here and, and, you know, I, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, we can do something with that chat.
Cool.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, it's a question about the date. Um, I intend in the condition is probably to add some sort of sunset provision for the temporary spaces, but probably write it pretty loosely, knowing how construction delays happen and things like that. So, um, expect something, but written more loosely than they'd ask.
The goal generally speaking is to be ready for the following school year, right? Yeah. Cool, all right, thank you. Robbie?
Yes.
All right, my notebook here. Good evening, mayor council and everybody else that's in attendance at the work session. We got some people on Zoom too, so it's real important that I'm operating the equipment correctly for those on Zoom, um, and not to, uh, pick on people in the audience, but I need you to come to the microphone because people on Zoom get upset, so. But that's the reason why I have this topic here tonight, is we wanna make that better so we don't have that issue. Uh, as you know, for last several years, you know, we've been, we've had the same audio, video, video equipment. Um, and it's been a little bit challenging. We discovered how much more challenging it has been during COVID. Uh, so we may do initially, you know, I have my, my personal Microsoft service, which is a plug for that. I love the Microsoft services in NFL and other sporting activities, but it works really good. I was walking around with it, if you remember a couple of years ago. Then we bought this camera here that I'm able to operate with a remote control and zoom in and zoom out. But that's one camera. Um, you're gonna hear a little bit more. We have some special guests here tonight from, of, of other cloud media. There's, they're gonna help me out with this, uh, presentation for you tonight. Um, but during COVID, we, we're virtual. And, and as you know, any kind of a virtual platform works great if everybody is virtual. But if it's a hybrid version where everybody's not virtual, we got some here, something like they have tonight. We have a special little speaker that, uh, our public works director, Darryl Fix. Again, we've been making all these little changes, tweaks and stuff to make it better for everybody as best we can so they can hear the sound, you can see our little, um, our folks from above the crowd probably laughing at some of our stuff here. It's going, but again, to see it live, they've been here before, I'm gonna introduce them here in a minute, but they've been here to see the facilities in order to give us a quote. About a year ago, I got a quote from above the cloud because it came highly recommended when I was out looking uh, for this type of equipment and they currently do powder springs. Uh, so, uh, and I talked to the city manager out there and they, and they loved the setup. So they, we got the quote and I was like, ooh, oh man, we don't have the budget for that. So I had to wait a little bit longer and went and got another quote and that was like multiple, several times higher than the quote of the day game. So I was like, oh, we definitely don't have the budget for that. But a couple of months ago, we had a, a meeting here, a council meeting, and we had a presentation by Marta, which nobody heard or saw, they couldn't. and we had a presentation by Marta, which nobody heard or saw, they couldn't. We, it is, you couldn't hear it, it was, it was not, it was, there was glitches. We've had presentations on this screen here, that's not down, that can't be seen. People at home on Zoom, they can't come to the meetings for various reasons. Maybe they're, they're, they have issues and amputatory issues, they can't get it, whatever. We want to make this accessible, even more accessible. So what I did was I went out and I got another quote, we need three quotes, but I got two. But our finance policies allow us for emergency purchase. To me, it's, it's been overdue, emergency purchase. So I wanted to go with this recommendation I'm making tonight, and I want to use, the reason why it's a little bit different now is because we have, through ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, we have state, local, and federal relief funds. Initially, that was given, it was very restricted, up until about May of this year, it was loosened up. So any municipality or any jurisdiction that got less than 10 million can use it on any governmental service. But as city manager who has to go through audit every year, the governmental service can't be little nickel, little dime stuff, it may be projects. Projects we can put before the council and put before auditors and say, okay, yeah, we spent 10,000 on this, we spent 50,000 on this, we spent 500,000 on this, so we can say. Auditor is already asking us right now, what did you spend your state, local, federal relief funds on? Well, we spent it on bonuses, how much you spent so far? 84,500? We can tell them that, we got that, this is what this is going to be. So for the purpose of the council and the taxpayers and the audience, it's your money, but it's the federal level money. So it's not your property tax money that we're using for this service. So above the cloud media came and gave a quote, and we're talking about cordless microphones, so you're not having to do what you have to do now, let me turn it on. If you've ever been to the GMA, been to a meeting there, they got the little gooseneck microphones, you just press the button, press it off, and you got your microphone. From, from us, I don't know, I'm stepping on your toes, you guys can present my club, Charles here from above the cloud, but I'll let him come up and help me, especially when there's questions. But it's gonna be cameras. Cameras are gonna be, instead of one there, we're gonna have at least two, I know of, and they're gonna be pointing towards you guys, as well as pointing toward the audience. So when they have questions coming up, so there's some back and forth. So it'll automatically, I think it automatically picks on the person speaking, but we'll talk about that. It's gonna have new soundboard. We're gonna have projection screens, TV screens, so there'll be one back here. There'll be a couple up here, TVs. So people, audience, you can see everything you heard and saw tonight, presentations. We'll upload it, so you can see it back here. But it's struggling, when they're holding stuff up here, you can't see what we're talking about, neither can people from home on Zoom. So again, this is something that is overdue, I think you deserve it, I think the citizens deserve it, and we have the funding to get it. And I would like to at least point out to the table, if you want to look at what we're, it's in the back, the second page, page two or three, what we, what we're, we're spending on various things. We haven't spent it all yet, but these are estimates of our state, local, federal relief fund, which is about $1.2 million, and we have to spend it by, I think it's December 31st, 2025. And you can see Public Works Building we talked about, the Paul Barnes in there, these are, these are estimates. Community Development Suite, I call it the suite, where Nathan and Mike moved, and what we spent on that, building it out and such. And C.O. carpet we spent, and there's maybe $48,423. So $48,423 will get you what Mike Upshaw can come help me explain a little bit better with above the cloud meeting, or his team members are here too. Because I know you'll ask questions that they'll be able to answer. I'll just sit down right here real quick. Darryl's not here to help me.
No, and Mike, now that you've been here watching the meeting, you've seen how he has to sit down there and throw the switches each time, so we don't get feedback, right? And, and, you know, I mean, the people on Zoom regularly are like, wait, I can't hear you, you can't tell what's going on. So for me, we've been talking for years about improving our ability to message out. People use Zoom a lot, and the ability to watch this kind of stuff from home and actually get the content is huge. So comfort me that this is going to work, right? Because that's the key for me.
Absolutely. Thank you all for the time and opportunities, Rob, thank you. So number one, yes, it'll work. You know, the way that things are set up now, clearly is not working, right? So when we look at it, we look at it from the standpoint of what a hybrid model actually looks like. Like right now, you should see who's on Zoom, because if somebody on Zoom wanted to communicate, or let's say they couldn't make it, and they were trying to get something done, they wouldn't have a way to respond back and forth this way. So in the city of Powder Springs, we've done multiple projects, right? So one was during COVID, started getting them set up for everything virtual. So Virtual Court, which runs very well, the municipal building was moved because they're building a new complex, so we had to take all of that, move it to another place, so we were able to do that. We also did all the work for the park, so all the audio, video that went in there. So when Pam, who reached out and let me know that Robbie would be giving me a call, I came down, back then, we looked and looked at what could be done in this room. So we laid out a plan that will work very well for this facility, that's going to allow for you to have a more functional meeting, right? He shouldn't have to point, oh, like, I'm not wearing my glasses, but probably if I was, I still wouldn't be able to see this. It would be better to have screens so that the audience can see, because, you know, you want to make it as visually appealing. But at the same time, the people on Zoom, they have no idea what you're talking about, right? So to be able to pull up the map on Zoom, and now they can see it and intelligently, you know, communicate back and forth with what's going on. Not to mention, if you had a presentation that was virtual, it would just, you know, make it hard, and from what I understand, you all have experienced that once before. So one of the things that we do is after we get everything installed, then we come in and do a training. So we'll make sure that everybody knows exactly what to do when they come into a meeting. And so, and that training doesn't just stop at us working with Robbie, but making sure that you are aware of everything that's going on. So like, I've been able to observe, if she's speaking at this table, and people on Zoom, she doesn't have a mic, there's one mic on this table, so now we have to slide it all the way down, and then, you know, kind of move the mic around. So now we're playing musical mic, right? So we want to take the opportunity to advance and really bring this to a true hybrid model that works for everybody involved, and really makes the city, you know, look much better in this presentation to the citizens, right? Because at the end of the day, you know, people want to know where their money is being spent. And in this case, it's not even coming out of those funds, so it's an opportunity to take advantage of, you know, what you do have access to, and provide a better service.
One thing we were talking about earlier today, you know, for people that can't, because of schedule reasons, can't watch on Zoom, or maybe their internet isn't good enough to watch on Zoom or whatever, as we're recording these things, we should have a terminal somewhere that somebody could come in tomorrow and watch the meeting if they wanted to. You know, people don't have computers at home or whatever, because that is a thing for some folks. That was Lori's suggestion, but I think that's a great add-on.
Well, that's a, a great, just like, you know, down in the senior center room.
Conference room, and just listen to the, to the meeting.
Yeah, or in the library. Have you all possibly thought about maybe streaming your meetings as well? What's the other thing you can do? You could put them on YouTube too.
So there's, that's one thing, is the internet is a problem.
Got it. Because some of the archived meetings can be stored, and people can go back online later and watch.
How long do you want to store those?
For indefinitely, as long as you.
So four years would not be a problem.
So retention issue that, that, you know, the city clerk is always bringing up, about how long you're supposed to do it for government, but.
So like, for instance, for the city of Powder Springs, we actually built out a whole custom streaming platform. So every time they go live with a meeting, it's not only recorded in Zoom, but it's also recorded online, and it's not in YouTube, so it's really their own private platform. So citizens can go back at any point in time and watch those messages.
Kind of like a private channel, right?
Yes.
So if you wanted to record them and save them for three, four years, that is feasible.
It's physically possible, for sure.
And it could be put on our city website, so people could actually go back and say, hey, I wanted to see what happened on March of 2019.
Absolutely.
And what would be your turnaround on installation?
So, so as far as, so, let me be clear on the storage side would be different. That would be a software-as-a-service platform, which is not included in this. But as far as the turnaround time on installation, at this point, soon as we get to green light and we're looking at equipment, we'll be able to determine when. Because the longer we wait with supply, you know, it's gonna get further and further away. So, but I do have Clarence with me as well, who can probably talk a little bit more about that. Clarence Penny, what's an estimate, yeah, I mean, like?
Well, real, real quick, when you say software, so what this, this package comes with upfront is good for, how many, how many meetings could be stored?
So when, when we talk about storage of meetings, so right now, you guys are using Zoom, so everything that you record is being recorded to Zoom, and based on whatever plan that is with Zoom, it can be stored indefinitely, right? But if we're talking about building out, so in this, we're not talking about the same thing like with the city of Powder Springs, when they have a custom platform that we built out, which means it's their own domain URL you can go to, it's almost like a YouTube, but it's more customized, that's not included in this proposal.
Correct, so, so what you're telling me is basically whether we got something new, we can already be doing that through Zoom.
Right, yeah.
We can store it up to three or four years.
Absolutely. Yeah, for, for Zoom, we pay a little extra, because we were not able to store those for long, so we increased our, our subscription, so we can store them a little bit longer. There's a capacity on storage, as you know. So once we, 90 days is our storage retention limit, we don't have to go past 90 days.
You can easily put it on YouTube, and it could last forever. But the, the point is, we'd have to change our retention policy, that's, that's the policy.
But right now, we do keep them for about four or five months, and then when it starts getting full, I go back and I delete. So I, we're in September now, so I would delete, make sure that, you know, like March, April, May, they're gone. So if you haven't seen them by then, it's.
What will they hold by now?
What?
What will we be able to retain by now if you didn't delete anything?
I'd have to look and see what the storage is, the capacity, but again, for Zoom, you just pay, the more you pay, the more you can store.
Okay, so what would that run? What is that, 300 bucks a year to save 30 meetings?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out the answer, what that costs.
Robbie, while you're looking at that, right now, our commission meetings are not Zoomed or recorded or saved, and I'd like to see that happen as well.
Because again, it requires having somebody sitting there running the council, right? So that the company can self-run.
Mike, that's kind of my concern. It's kind of like, you need to hire a facilitator if you want to be part of the meeting. We've got our staff trying to operate these things and be part of the meeting as well. Kind of want to know, you know, how, how, how much easier is this gonna be for them? Is it pretty much once it's set up, is it automated? Do they, does, need to go to astronaut school to learn how to fly the rocket?
Yeah, great. Yes, so that's a good question. So it's not automated, but it's very streamlined. So it becomes more of a functional process, where you're not running around trying to manually do everything, and so it's more of a set it and forget it kind of thing. It'll, instead of everything being here, it'll be out of the way, because things will be moved into the back. And so once they come in and set up for the meeting, it should be very little tweaks that'll happen after that, right?
Yeah, once you turn it on, the meeting's running, you don't have to mess with it, basically.
Yeah, that's it. So no, no different than being, you know, logged in on Zoom or that kind of thing, but, and unmuting people when they need to be unmuted and that kind of thing. So that's really, when you start getting to hybrid, then obviously you have to have somebody running that portion of it, but that's a much simpler process than trying to EQ every mic, turn the mics on and off. You guys will be able to self-mute and manage that whole process from right where you are.
And what do you think the shelf life is on this equipment? Some of it's probably a little pricey, the cameras or the mics are, you know, do they pretty much last five, 10 years before they need to be upgraded, or?
Yeah, generally with equipment, unless you're making some major changes, you know, the life expectancy of most of the stuff is, you know, 10 years, 15 years, always depending on use case. But, you know, it's been our experience in different scenarios where we've installed the equipment, any immediate upgrades is typically based on, you know, where we're putting the equipment at. So for instance, adding to already existing installations. So like with the city of Powder Springs, we did an install, they wanted to add some additional upgrades later. So, but we built that in, when we put the system together, so that that way, when they wanted to add additional microphones or different things like that. So really, you know, it's how you build into the future of the equipment, so that you kind of stay ahead of certain things. Now, we do know that equipment ages out, right? And we're not in control of that, so we always look at the most current equipment today, so that that way it gives you a long life of equipment based on what you want to have installed at this present point.
So with your pricing, how, how does that work? I see what you got here, what I mean is, by adding that feature to have the space to save meetings for a duration of three, four years.
So that becomes a, as I said, a software-as-a-service, so what we would do is we would build that out, and then there's a monthly fee or annual fee, depending on how you want to pay it, that would allot for a certain amount of storage, however much storage that you want to have. We would secure a specific domain for the city of Chattahoochee Hills, so that that way everything is under that domain, right? And so now, the way that we do it for, say, the city of Powder Springs, is we have two functions, right? One is the court, because every court is streamed and it's recorded and stored, right? And so, and they also do it on Zoom. So you have Zoom, live streaming, and then the storage component after, it's auto-archived. So you don't even have to upload it to the cloud, it's already there. So we would put together a separate proposal for that, and then, you know, we would talk about costing, what's centered around putting that together for you.
Just on that, what does that run for a year? I mean, you've done it before, what is that?
Yeah, well, on average, it's about $7,200 a year, based on the custom platform that we put together.
Okay, so that's the platform.
Yeah.
So Zoom would be our better option, since it's already built?
Or Zoom plus YouTube or whatever.
Yeah, you can do Zoom plus YouTube, you can do Facebook Live, this, I mean, you have multiple different options.
What my, what my interest is in is in just strictly, once this meeting's over, it is archived.
Yep.
So that, you know, we deal with some he said, she said, whatever, that way you don't have to take my word for it, you don't have to take her word for it. What I want you to be able to do is push play.
Right.
That's what I'm getting to. What is that certain of those costs?
Well, I think in that regard, you know, taking a file from Zoom really is the least expensive option, and you can actually take that file and upload it to YouTube. And so normally, when you get into a custom layout, it's a couple of the variables that you're trying to, you know, manage, right? Number one, you put content in a specific space, so people don't have to try to go to YouTube and go through all the additional content to try to find what it is. It's a certain way that you want to categorize content, be able to archive and pull it later. So when we put together a system, it's for a specific use case. So in, in this case, what you're doing now with Zoom, even with paying for the additional storage, it'd be worth it from a cost standpoint, and that would resolve that.
Their platform's already there, and you're just paying for their service.
Right, but then when somebody wants it, you have to either send them the link, right? Or you have to download it, so that they can watch it.
But that would allow us to download it to our internet, to our website, so anybody could even.
Right.
Maybe you could consider adding to this proposal some consulting hours to help us figure out what the best option between those three things might be.
Yeah, and that, and that's what we do for the city of Powder Springs, we're actually the technical consultant for them. So we walk through every scenario when it comes to, you know, this type of stuff. Because technically, you can also have a server installed in-house that you can record every meeting to, and you can save it to that, and then when somebody comes in, they can pull it up and watch there. So you can have it, you know, on a server, and then you can also still upload that directly too. So if you're downloading the files from Zoom to a server, then that eliminates the additional cost that you would pay Zoom for storage, because now you'll be keeping it in-house. So there's multiple different ways to do it, it's just a matter of what works best, you know, for you all, based on the workflow that you want to create. And it sounds like to me it's, it's just not that complicated.
That's not.
There we go, okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right. Thank you. All right. This next one you, I would expect this next one to be Greg.
Yeah, I just can't come up.
So there he is, Greg, you're down there hiding in the corner.
Yes, it was. So we're talking hazard mitigation.
You let anybody in here?
In the year 2000, there was a Disaster Mitigation Act passed that required all governments, municipalities. In, uh, the year two thousand, there was a disaster mitigation act passed that required all governments, municipalities to develop a plan. Really a two-part plan is probably the way to say this, to mitigate hazards known or that can, can exist right near and now and that can occur. So that's one half. And the other half is develop the, the plan for what you'll do for those individual types of things. Here's why I'm, I'm saying it that way. You know that in the last two years, we published our own disaster management plan. And that plan is based on a lot of the research that occurs in this hazard mitigation planning or research process. Okay, so the nine hundred and fifteen page document, I'd love to email you. It is available, but it's just too bulky to email and too bulky to just even print out. But we, we will print out one copy and have a copy handy to use, okay?
Saying that, that's to find out what's in?
No, not at all. Not at all, we already have that. And, and what we're asking for you to do is endorse, uh, the plan as it has been developed. After another five years, when I, just historically, when I came on board in twenty fourteen as your chief, I inherited a plan that had been in place since the beginning of the city. So there are various objectives and requirements that were put into place and I needed to begin to work to complete those tasks and then evaluate our city and, and come up with in other, other ideas of those hazards that we need to manage or mitigate and then manage. And so as that, as I became involved in that process, that unknowingly was incredibly helpful towards developing the disaster management plan that we have. Okay? Um, so the FEMA, i- it goes all the way to FEMA, but FEMA, GMA, and then down to the county level. Our Atlanta Fulton County EMA require that you adopt the plan. They want you to, um, say, we're comfortable with this, with the goals that we've ever established. And, um, and that's really, that's, that's really what we're asking you to do is, is, is adopt the thing that you've adopted every five years. It is, it is a moving target in a way. And, and why do I say it that way? If you look in the memo there, you'll see all the different things that, that the hazard mitigation planning covers. Uh, and so we attempt to cover all those things in our own disaster management plan. But flood and drought are driven by weather patterns. And so that changes, um, severe weather, extreme heat, all these other things. A component of that is the development that we have. And so how many souls we look after and how much, uh, it takes to, to try to protect in the case of, of one of these disasters. So, uh, i- it always gets updated. And, um, we've been given notice this week that, um, there's a particular funding opportunity coming through GMA that allows us to then, you know, potentially act on some of the goals that we have. And, and, and just to give you an example, what are some of the goals? You want to know, well, what are you, what are we adopting? One of the goals was to work to, um, establish better information about our flood planes and understand what, uh, more about that and the potential for that. Unless they are fifty or a hundred year event and how that drives our development planning. Another is, uh, even maybe perhaps a little more simple, that's to harden this facility so that it, it protects the operations of the government and/or the citizen or, or employee while they're here. So there's a number of those goals there. They have changed a little bit, but not, not tremendously. It will.
But the key is having presupposed and thought about all that, right?
Yeah.
So those type of funds, it could be available? It, it would be for implementing administration parts of the plan? Is that?
Yes, more or less. So the, the goals that we have get ranked by high priority, lesser priority, moderate and so forth. And so in the funding that is available there, some things do qualify, some things that we have do qualify for these grant opportunities and, and some don't. We need to plan and budget, you know, on, on our own.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Greg, then maybe this is a question for the lawyers. Um, if we had, you know, go ahead and adopt this and, and pass it, does this mitigation plan supersede any of our own mitigation plans? Which, which takes precedent?
No, no. Our, our own mitigation plan.
Okay.
Is expressed within this larger plan. The reason this document is nine hundred and fifteen pages too is because every municipal government in the county has had to publish it. It's all published in that nine hundred and fifteen page document.
Okay.
But I, I wish I could take it and give you just the piece that fits Chattahoochee Hills with the way it's composed. It's for drought or flood plain and it goes through each city's expression of need and, and research and so forth. And then, so it's, it's put together like that till we, we're interlaced throughout the whole nine hundred and fifteen page document.
Yeah, like, like Richie said, I'm glad you're reading it.
Um, I just want to give you one last example. Um, I think you'd, you'd like to see, um, some of the matrices that I've, I've printed and have here, but I risk the risk assessment. And, um, you, you probably don't realize that, that there is a National Bureau of Dams. I guess they call it the dam bureau. Excuse me, that was low hanging fruit, right? I'm sorry. And, and yet in the city of Chattahoochee Hills, within our boundaries, there are nine dams that are, um, on record with the US Bureau that would impact lives and property if they failed under heavy rain. And you don't really think of that, but, um.
So who inspects the, uh, you know, the integrity of these dams?
The US Bureau of Dams.
Really?
I, I think it's, I, I don't know enough about that. I, I should, but I, I know that the US Army Corps of Engineers is involved in, in that process as well. And I'm sure anymore, it's a matter of when you request to build one and you, it, it meets certain criteria, then a lot of engineering has, in place has to come forward. And somebody comes out and says, yeah, it looks good, or do this or do that.
And we get dancer, that might be even more critical.
Certainly.
My guess is ours aren't on the inspection list probably, you know, it's for, for bigger ones and, and it probably could be.
I, I would love to make a copy of this for you if you'd like to see some of the detail of it. Because I, I went into, uh, some of the pieces that seem more, um, interesting. Uh, in, in terms of risk assessment, like dam failure and drought and flood, some of the things that we seem to have a greater potential for. So here's a little grouping of documents that I give you and it just gives you some ideas of, of what's in this. It's incredibly useful information for the city.
Thanks Greg, a lot of work in that. Uh, I think these next two are both yours as well, so.
Yes, sir. So, uh, the next item I believe is, uh, the recommendation for a professional service contract agreement with Dr. Chris Edens. Dr. Chris Edens is our medical director, uh, for our emergency medical services so that we can operate as a medical first responder, a licensed medical first responder with the state of Georgia on, for, on behalf of the city. And, um, little, little information for you. When doctor, when the city was chartered, Dr. Chris Edens agreed to become our medical director based on some handshake agreement and some relationships and helped develop our medical care guidelines, our patient care guidelines and so many things. He has done that for fifteen years up until this point pro bono. Okay? In most municipalities, uh, for their EMS services, that, that kind of service, depending on the size of the department and this, the population goes for as little as ten thousand and, and upwards of seventy-five thousand very easily. So he is asking that we, um, now make an agreement to pay a, a nine thousand dollar fee per annum. Uh, that'll be paid quarterly and it would not go into effect for us until October of this year. He, he also in the agreement, which you have a copy of there, is going, it agrees to provide more engagement with our personnel in terms of training and oversight, which we really haven't had. He's been incredibly helpful and available to us. But now we have an agreement that we can say, we're really going to count on you to teach some of this and this and this. And we're already acting on that with him.
Could you just tell me a little bit more?
Sorry.
Could, could you tell me a little bit more about his responsibilities? I mean, I had no idea we had this guy around fifteen years.
Yeah, so by law, you got to have the medical director that says you can do this and you can do it in this way. And you're really operating under his license.
Okay.
Okay? His physician's license and then we're certified by the state as a medical first responder to operate in the way we do, under his license. So at any moment in time, I could call Chris up and Dr. Edens up and say, uh, I'm with a patient, uh, and I have this particular concern and I want to transport them right now and not wait on Grady to get here. And.
He's the authority that makes that okay.
He's the authority that makes that okay. Um, he's the guy who says, yes, uh, we should be, we should be giving two milliliters of Narcan, no more than three times to a patient before we've now reached a max load for that patient. Don't do anything more than that, it could be harmful. Or it's at least a reasonable threshold for what you're doing in, in the field until you do something more, maybe give more under the direction of, eyeball direction of a, of a physician in the hospital. That's a patient care guideline, a protocol. So he's, he's helping us make sure that that is current. He has to sign off on those for us every year and every two years in the state license management system. We have to go back and, and do all of that, a recent, uh, with him, verify all that with him. He signs off on our pharmaceutical agreement with the company, uh, that supplies the controlled medications, like the narcotic types of things that we would, we would potentially give. Uh, you, you know, you got to have an agreement from him with the pharmacy, with the city to satisfy Drug Enforcement Agency.
And he would come down and do, I guess, does he do some training with, with you guys?
He, he has done some, but in this agreement, he agrees to provide so many hours of training that we can, uh, we can rely on that in a way differently than what we've been able to when he's been doing it for free.
He, he does this for several other jurisdictions, but he's focusing in now on.
He is the medical director for Palmetto and Fairburn and, uh, recently, um, I want to say Mableton, um, and maybe Marrow. But he has practiced for so many years in emergency trauma medicine. And he's now moving away from regular practice, like in the ER, being one of the attending and, um, any one of the ERs around. Has different times to, to be working there and just trying to move into something like this in his retirement years. He's, he's a good guy, sixty-four, I believe is right.
He's a young sixty-four.
He's a young sixty-four.
Very much. And, uh, and, and Chief Brad, in, in all his intellect, anticipated this. So this is actually already in the budget.
Yes. Yes, this is not new, new expenses, something we knew was coming.
And speaking of budgets, are there other questions, sorry?
Comment, maybe you can get him to move down here.
He's a good guy.
He's a good guy, he moves around a lot.
So the next thing is the pumper, or, or, or.
So.
Anchor, sorry.
Several years ago, we, we began pointing out to you the need for certain capital replacements. And, um, the engines that we have purchased have always been used. And so as we began to look at the time that those units have operated, plus the, we're talking about the used ones, plus the expense that is going into maintaining them, we've arrived at this point in time where we said, in the fiscal year twenty-two, we would attempt a purchase to, of a new engine, a new fire engine. So what we have, have run, uh, come upon is that right now with, uh, Mike spoke of, of supply issues. There are so few fire engines available because there's a lot of chassis sitting in, in the different manufacturing lots throughout the US. Pierce, Suffolk, Rosenbauer, Bauer E-one, um, HME, and, and, and they can't finish them. And so there is a small amount of fire engine vehicle available throughout the whole US. So I said to Robbie, if, if we wait longer, it's just going to take longer. And the price is going to go up because demand has already driven the price up. And in the last two months, two units that we were hopeful to be able to get to this moment in time and purchase are gone. Okay, so, uh, in, in, at this moment then, we, we come to you with the idea that, that a particular unit at Fouts Brothers Fire, which sold us the pumper tender two years ago, uh, has come available. And we want to be able to act on that if, if you would, you would, um, approve of that. We wanted to be able to act on it in this way. The recommendation is to be able to, to, to spend up to, uh, this amount of money recommended, three hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars to make the purchase using our capital funds and then seek financing. Um, GMA has been helpful to Robbie and I to understand what a, what a, um, a five and a seven year term note would look like. Uh, and, um, a pretty good interest rate, what that annual, uh, debt payment would be for the city, which wouldn't come available. Which could, which come, wouldn't come due this fiscal year, would come due in the next fiscal year.
You're saying we, we buy it upfront and then finance it?
And then we finance it. Um, and, um.
So it won't hit this year's budget?
It won't hurt us on this year's budget and it begins, you know, it, it, it begins to give us an edge to react quickly to purchase an engine that if we don't, we'll just see it slip away.
Why won't we try to finance it first, Greg? What's, what's wrong with that, trying to finance that?
Right out, right, you mean, right out, right out the gate?
Right out the gate.
You, you gotta, you gotta give GMA what you're purchasing and we give him what we're purchasing. He goes back to the market.
It's already gone.
It's gone. So.
We've got the cash to do it this way.
Yeah.
And so it, it, it's the same effect, it's just.
We did it with.
A month where you don't have the money in your account.
We did it with the last truck too, we did the same thing, so.
Greg, how quickly are the prices moving up?
Oh, um, so we were looking at a Rosenbauer unit with NAFCO and we saw that unit go from three twenty-five to three, three seventy-five. Quick. Um, we've, we've seen other units that we, we thought would be more affordable. And, and again, when we looked at capital replacement several years ago and I started talking about this and we started looking at, at, at planning it even into the budget. It's not planned into the budget, but it's planned, you know, as a part of a capital recommendation.
Right.
Um, we were talking three hundred and fifty thousand. And I, you know, the three, the three hundred, so you're, you're clear or just emphasize what you're looking at. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand on this truck plus another thirty thousand, six hundred and thirty-five for upfitting. Obviously, they sell you a truck, they're not going to put in your radios, they're not going to put in some of the other things that we have to have. And so there's always an outfit charge. So the three fifty, the three fifty-five, six thirty-five that we're asking for is still below what we are seeing in the market price for units from, um, uh, E-one. Um, Pierce is straight out, Suffolk is straight out. Those units are in excess of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now.
Can you maybe tell me? Greg, if you call somebody and say, listen, y'all want that fire engine with the City of Chattahoochee Hills? About I'll send you fifty grand and you give me four weeks to get it financed, if not, I'll send you the money. That's not an option.
Well, it's not that, I haven't explored that piece of the, of the purchase plan.
Like that all the time.
And I, I, you know, I mean, that, however we go about that, my, what I'm, I'm attempting to do is locate that unit and say, how would we go about it? And I'm, that's really what my request to you is, is to prove a way to go about it.
Conversations lately about, you know, if we don't do this and that and everything else, you know, we're broke, we got to do this or whatever. Now, here's three fifty to put on the table. So, you know, last time we purchased land over there, did we ever go back to GMA? So, you know, last time we purchased land over there, did we ever go back to GMA and finance that?
We haven't because you guys talked about creating, like...
Well, we ain't talked about it in months.
Doing parcels.
So the answer's no. So that's, that's my point, I think there's other ways to, to finance something of that, and anybody will work with you.
And that's the finance piece that I'm just not that special.
We're financing it anyway.
Yeah. So, so my, my request...
My point is, Tom, I mean, you, you know as good as I do, we bought the land last time, the point was to go back and refinance that, it just did not happen. So I'd, I'd hate to in these times right now of uncertainty, take that kind of cash off the table if we have the ability to finance something.
Correct, and we are going to finance this.
And I think City of Chattahoochee Hills has the clout to do that.
Anyway. Bye, Ken. The, and that's it for the meeting. Sorry.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
We'll come up real quick.
Glad Park, you have something that came up today?
I called that for the late ad, I sent the email to Tom, sorry, Mayor Reed yesterday, see if he would add this to the, to the agenda, because we have the Horizon Wireless putting a cell tower out, they've done the access road, and since the beginning of this whole discussion, we said, hey, why don't we see if we can get a parking lot out of this deal? And, and we were able to have them move the access drive from beyond the gate to in front of the gate. It took them a couple of extra steps, and they almost thought they were going to have to go through another environmental study and prolong it and such and so forth, but they got it to be done. Oh, sole purpose of that, so they can access their cell tower, and then at the same time, we can build a parking lot. And, you know, we thought, okay, Darryl's got equipment and so on and so forth, he can build that parking lot. But it turns out, there's a lot more to it than that, include removing all the trees. And we know now that the cell tower, they're not going to put this cell tower in until we move those trees, obviously, because the trees can fall on the cell tower and it can't be, they can't have that liability. So they're mobilized now, the grader and everything, it's a contractor, and he's got a price for us and he can do it. And he said, I can do it, but, you know, I'm, I'm here now, I'm doing now. I said, well, I can't spend over fifty thousand dollars without the council approval, and it's a fifty-five thousand dollar, basically soup to nuts, if that's correct phraseology or whatever, but do it, the entire parking lot, grade it, or get rid of the trees, grade it, smooth it, gravel it, put it gravel. The only thing we would have to do is go back and Darryl, you know, he is, he'd want to put some buildings on top to make it a little bit more firm. So he'll be gone, the grader will be gone, they'll be moving forward by the time our next council meeting rolls around. So we have the hotel motel funds to do this, this qualifies, it's a, it's Parks and Trails qualifies for hotel motels fund spending, so that's why I want to have it on agenda because this guy's mobilized. If not, we'll have to go back, and by the way, we'll have to tell them, timeout, don't put the cell tower up yet, we're getting ready to take these trees down, we'll have to get another contractor, maybe the same contractor, we have to mobilize again, additional cost. So we're trying to capitalize on this opportunity. That's why I wanted to see if I can add it to this agenda, this meeting, Tom. I, I don't know the count of trees, I can, I can find it out, Darryl's been on site.
I imagine it would be just the ones that if they fail could hit it.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's also the grading out of the parking lot and all that too.
Yeah. And the gravel, he's going to get gravel, Darryl said, hold on, you know, Darryl, where you get the gravel? I got a guy, I can get the gravel a lot cheaper. So, you know, he's able to get them down a little more, he's, he's intent, potentially get them down even more than that, but I want to give a worst case scenario.
Is that as tourniquet costs or...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The parking lot be done, at that particular time, you will have a parking lot there. And what you do with that's another conversation, if you want to make that, cars, they're passholders only, or, we talk about that later, but this is more about, hey, infrastructure, so to speak. And I know it's, it's, I don't like adding things to the agenda, but, you know, I hate to not...
It's just happened.
It just happened, that quick.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, life happens.
These folks right here probably would appreciate it. Put them on the spot.
Okay, thank you. And the agenda?
It's, it's warm out there, isn't it?
It is.
Dana, I, I appreciate it, you're, you're fighting to stay awake, I, I've noticed a couple of times, so it's like, I'm having that same thing myself right now, so. All right. That is, that is it then for the agenda review. Dana, would you send me a, a quick email with a number for that, please, so I can add it to the... I didn't have it written down, that's why I forgot about it. All right, next up is convention and visitor bureau appointments, you know, we have the ordinance to do that, I had asked folks to send me in information on that, had also posted it on city website, Lori had sent some stuff out. Got a bunch of people reaching out and people that had reached out to your council people, and you should have in front of you, something that has... So what I did, last week I sent everybody an email asking them to, number one, confirm that they're actually interested, because several of the names that I'd gotten, I had talked to and wanted to make sure that they actually were. Some of them then had questions about what was involved, some of them removed themselves from consideration after those questions. I'd asked everybody to send me, basically, whatever they thought in their background made them a good candidate for the role, give them a little bit of information on what the role was. A couple of people were like, oh, it's not a good fit for me based on that. And then this is everybody else that was interested, and either in the body of the thing you've got there, the, the information that they sent me in the form of a letter, for some, others also included a resume, and so for some, you've got a resume also at the back. And it's a pretty impressive group, we've got people that have run convention and visitor bureaus, and, you know, executive, not the chair people of those, or have actually been on boards of them, people that are involved with, you know, the hotels here, the different things that do events, like eventing or the art farm. And the way that the ordinance is written, and, and here's what I'm thinking we should do, the ordinance is written saying that each council person gets to designate a person, though, like you, you just say, I want this person, and that person is on for you, they don't have to be in your district, they can be, you know, whatever, whatever that looks like. And then we can have two to four more, and we'll do that basically the same way we do all of the other commissions, I'll put together, out of, you know, like if you're nominating people from here, obviously you won't need to nominate them again. If, if there are people that are, aren't from here, whatever, you know, the best of the leftovers, basically, that aren't nominated already, we'll talk about it the next council meeting when we put the whole slate through. So, you know, if you want to let me know now or, or in the next few days, who the people that you're wanting to nominate directly are, so that I can give you then a list of, okay, here are all the other people that we've had, either volunteer or recommended, that haven't already been nominated, and here's what I'm suggesting, we can talk about that. Does that sound right? Okay. I mean, if you want to, if you want to do that now, you know, if you know who you want?
Yeah.
So Troy, do you have someone that you want yet, or do you want to, again, no problem with deferring until...
No, I'm going to defer, you're going to actually read through them a little bit better.
Yeah, okay. Camille?
I'm nominating Steve Igrin. And, and, and thanks Steve for volunteering, by the way. And a lot of that, I mean, obviously, the, all the ChatHills work, but some things that I've really learned through the process is Steve's work with the Atlanta CVB Midtown Alliance and Georgia Hospitality and Travel Association, so, I mean, that experience, I feel like, and, and the hotel and motel, that we get a lot of that to support the city from the Serenby Inn and Serenby in general, with the short-term rentals. So I think it's a good, really solid fit.
Okay. Lori, did you have someone?
Oh, yeah, I want to nominate Carla Lucas Edwards, she's a fairly new resident to the rural district in Chattahoochee Hills, moved here last year, has, has a good bit of marketing experience and has pulled together the type of websites that the CDC has to offer, and just seems overall enthusiastic and enthusiastic and has really good skills, I think, would be a good part of this team.
You have someone ready or...
Yes, I actually have two people, but I need to talk with them and make sure it's okay. I just didn't realize it was hitting my boat Tuesday.
Sorry. Yeah, no, sorry.
And I have Wood, she is in the, in the package here, she's into real estate and she's into community as well.
All right. And again, Troy and Richie, if you want to just reach out to me, and then we'll circulate again what's, what's not already been selected after that, and act on that in the next meeting. Next is the town hall, we had talked in the retreat about doing a town hall this fall, and want to get that on the schedule probably sometime early in October, I would think, that's what we had talked about in the, in the, in the retreat. But I want to work around the other stuff, so I'll circulate, and you know about the date, because I know we've got, you know, the ball festival, we've got other things going on, but try to pick one that works for everybody.
Could we get that date, I hate to rush you, but like in the next two weeks or so, so we have time to actually mail?
No, for sure, I will send an email out about this tomorrow. I just wanted to talk about it, and I, I was thinking, you know, so there, there's a traditional way that when cities around us do a town hall, you know, they have all the departments come, the departments do a presentation, maybe there's a little Q and A at the end, but it feels to me like we've got a lot of issues that are out that people want to talk about right now, and I, I wanted to focus more on actual issues, like, you know, here's the development stuff that's going on, here's what's around us, here's the impact that it has, here are some budget issues, here's what that actually looks like, here, you know, that you might have heard that this isn't right, here's what's right, right? And then also things around like the bikes and what we can actually do, and garbage, and what we can actually do, and, you know, that sort of stuff. And I'm just looking for feedback from the council on that, that, that feels more relevant to me.
I like the, the more focused town hall meeting, the last one we, we had, 2021, District Three, it was really long because we had, which you said, the traditional style. But what I like to see is, is that extended staff report, maybe we could pull together a document, not a document, but you know, a handout, we could give to people and put on the website, so they have an informational packet of all the rest of the stuff that's traditional. That way, we've got more time for their Q and As during the meeting and...
I'll, I'll, we'll reach out first on the schedule, and then we'll, we'll, same page on the schedule. Any other thoughts that people have about...
No, obviously, we're not, we, if we pass, if we agree on the AV system, we won't have that ready, or would we? If we did it like mid-October versus early October?
He, he told me, when I walked by, it could be a three-week turnaround.
Well, you got to take it forward.
I mean, that would really improve, mean, allow a lot more people, I mean, to participate. I mean, I would be willing to delay it a little bit, just to have that option.
If you, if you approve it next Tuesday, you got more than three weeks.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's a great idea, actually. Let's, let's try to get, we'll pick some dates, get it settled in on dates so we know we can all be there, and then, if one of those dates works for them, we'll pick that later one of it.
I mean, even if it's the scaled-down version with just, you know, the initial, whatever they can get in, and then add to after the meeting.
That is a great idea.
That's a, that's a fantastic proposition, I mean, I'm full behind it, I'm excited about it in many ways, it's a, you know, it's more participatory, you know, environment for the community, and, and it's just especially recording and things of that nature, because I know a lot of times I get it at the end of these meetings, and maybe I'm just, you know, whatever, but I'm going, wow, what was said about this, or what was said about that? You know, I'd love to just sit and cogitate over that and listening to it again, you know? So it's the only way I made it through college, you know? Just recording my professors, but anyway.
Anything else on that? So scheduling is the big issue there. I saw a couple of different threads and actually reached out to several people, there was this whole conversation going on about the idea of having a community garden somewhere, and twofold, right? We've had this conversation before over the years, you know, the, the kind of place where you might be able to come and, and garden for yourself, but the thread that I was following was more about, let's create a place where we're intentionally growing vegetables for people that are using community brickworks, and have it be something that is focused on that. And that felt to me like something that we might be able to do on some of the land here close by City Hall, you know, the, the kind of outline plan that we have from the students, and then this thing that we just hired the consultants for, the, the first meeting is happening momentarily to kind of frame that out, we'll start having some meetings around the RICO, finishing up that RICO plan, to your point, you know, what are we doing with the lots and all of that? It just feels like something that would be a good fit for that. I'm curious whether anybody supports that idea or sees it differently. And I'll, I'll wait for you. No, that's fine, I mean, just you're chomping, and, and I, I'm going to get some other people there, I'm going to go first. Anybody got any thoughts on that?
Really? As far as, you know, that type of project, it sounds like a pretty good idea, actually.
If you have volunteers, right?
Yeah.
Camille?
No, I like it, I think we could, you know, maybe add into that like a pollinator garden of some sort, since the B-City situation, you know, kind of put those two together somehow, I don't know, but I think it all flows and works smart, yeah.
You can go that way and then back.
From some of the schools.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Especially the...
There, there were actually some of the people that were on that thread were talking about that, you know, or like they're in a homeschool program, they would love a place for people to do that kind of thing.
Be great. Of course, we were forced to pick in our gardens, you know, but, you know, that's right.
I think it's true.
I got you, I got you.
I think it's a great idea, that was one of the things we kind of talked about during our first meeting a couple of years ago, as we were bringing the community together.
Are you any thoughts on that?
Yeah, anytime you grow food for people that need it, it's always a good thing, but I would definitely build yourself a high fence, because you're just going to, it's going to get mowed down if you don't. Look at where you live.
I think it's a good idea too, and this idea has been expressed before, and the challenge is, one, getting volunteers and getting them to commit to it, because if we're going to, especially if we're going to use city-owned property, if they give up on it, we'd want the property to return back to its normal state, not just left as a big hot mess. And it needs to be in a place where there's water, probably have to have some sort of fence or, or something to keep the deer out. So, not to be the Debbie Downer, but just to say, those were some of the issues that were discussed before, a couple of volunteers expressed interest, but never really kind of went forward on it.
Right. Well, there was also a conversation about the kind of community garden where everybody has a plot, and I've never seen one of those that's going to be quite a hot mess. Next up, there's this ongoing conversation that we've been having about the ambulance service, is Greg still down there?
Look for a Grady ambulance, I think.
Oh, yeah, okay, lost, yeah, well, so the long and the short of lost is that it is still, there's still no agreement, and we are heading toward mediation. Fulton County put a couple of names out for mediation, the cities were like, well, that's interesting, but they're all Fulton County people, so now there's a city mediator that they're picking and a Fulton County one, and that will be the next step. Again, every, every legal argument supports the city's perspective, so we'll see, you know, where that ends up, the, the difficulty always is that if Fulton County doesn't get enough...
What do they call it?
Would they really blow up the whole world to prove their point?
Call it?
I'm not really sure of the answer to that. November, has to be resolved in November. Greg, the next thing up is the ambulance service, and as you know, we've been talking about this, and I think we mentioned it in one of the previous meetings, the meeting that we had with all the mayors, where, you know, we're looking at the other options that there might be to improve Grady service. One of the things that's happened in the past is cities or the county have paid extra funding to Grady to stock extra trucks, basically, so that you've got more, you know, dedicated service that you're paying for to have there. There's the conversation that's ongoing too, about the possibility of leveraging Hayfield's license to actually have the cities come together and stand up their own service, and there's an important data point that's just come out on the, on the cost of the up, uploading more trucks, right?
Yeah, just, well, so there has always been a discussion of what does it take if a city wants to have a dedicated unit in its city just for us? And there was the, the estimation based on hearsay, I guess, that Sandy Springs was paying three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a unit, and that was back when all of this discussion really started in earnest in 2015, 16, for me, that swapped over from, swapped us over from AMR to Grady.
That swapped over from, swapped us over from AMR to Grady, okay? Well, that price is now gone. And so when I asked the CEO for EMS operations for Grady to come down and meet with us about, you know, about what all of this means, the level zeros, the, the extended response times, the, the options, if we think outside the box a little bit. And, and his price tag for providing us a transport unit dedicated for Chattahoochee Hills is $575,000. I say that, that way because I want to, I punctuate for you the fact that they said they would provide a level of service and they aren't. And in order to get that, we're having to pay more to get something dedicated like that. So all along the way, the conversation has morphed to, well, can we, can we think about this in a whole other way? And it came up that during pandemic, a number of ambulances were made available to different cities so that they could be used in a quarantine-type fashion and, and help the cities handle their EMS load, which was much higher than it is today. And it spiked during that time. And Grady had developed a fairly large inventory at that time because of that. So I had been told by their op, one of their operations guy, well, they've got 15 or 20 units sitting on a yard, but they can't staff them. And you've heard me speak of the staffing issues, okay, that we all have in EMS. And so I said, how much, if you provide us a unit? And better yet, what if you've set, you lease us a unit for a dollar a year and let us transport under your transport license? And he scratched his head. Now, this is the CEO for, this is the vice president for EMS operations. His intellect's much higher than mine. I thought he would have thought of this already. He said, I haven't thought of that. That's a pretty good idea. And I said to Henry Argo, chief of, could we? Work together to staff that so that I don't get into a situation where we're having to hire more people? If, if, if possible, could we look at one man from, one, one individual from you and one from us? That we should have a, a unit that we can support the needs of the two cities? That's still with Grady coming and doing their thing. This is if we can't get a unit quickly enough. So I'm, I'm going to need to give you this information. Level zero is a term used when there's an EMS incident and we go and there's no ambulances available for us, okay? That occurs 40% of the time on our EMS unit incidents. But I need to say that to you because I need to, I need to illustrate for you that we need Grady to still come and we need a better safety net ourselves. And we still need to think about how we would do that, that if that unit transports out, we still have as much safety net as we can. And that means we still have our own MID51, our transport-capable unit, and it's still there to run those calls and we still have Grady. You can't really get involved in whatever way in, in transporting patients and only have one transport unit. You, you gotta have multiple. And it just seems like the, the way that we might go. So I'm, I'm going to tell you more about that, I guess, in, in individual conversations. That's about what I would say on Tuesday night, that we're, we're trying to think outside the box and it might have some additional cost for us. But this problem of level zero and Grady provide the level of response that we need is not going away. And it's, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a problem across the board for everyone in terms of staffing. It's a problem in terms of population growth. It's a problem in terms of public expectation. So it's just not going away right away.
And they just announced today, too, that they're closing the Atlanta Medical Center, which is the only other level-one trauma center.
We just lost Atlanta Medical Center down there. That's Wellstar, you know, Wellstar just within the last six months also closed the Southern, South Fulton Hospital. So we've lost two hospitals. So now we're in a bigger situation where transport services, licensed transport services like Grady serving the South Fulton Zone is going to go to fewer hospitals and have longer wait times. We, we talk about wall times where you get there, the hospital's got enough patients, they can't turn those people over. So there's been a lot of conversation among the chiefs and, and with the mayors, too, about engaging on the level of, at the level of the county and the commissioners and then to the state legislators to find a way to have health and human services lean on the hospitals, hospital commission to find ways, more solution to turn over power people and get them back here where they can be ready for the next call instead of stuck in a ER hallway waiting for a handoff of patient. So short and sweet is just trying to do everything we can and think outside the box. It might need your help.
It's, it's a huge issue and it's, it's one that just keeps getting worse, too. In, in interesting news, you know, like today, when I was in the office, met a couple of new paramedics and EMTs that Greg is hiring. I mean, we're doing well, keeping up our end of the bargain. It's, it's people like Grady that you can't count on. The next item is, it's a twofold thing. One is there are several text amendments to the development code that have come out of conversations with the planning department, with our consultants, with planning and zoning, you know, all around, basically. And then also, and, and probably the thing that's more of the, the big deal is the TDR ordinance has always had in it the density transfer credit mechanism that was never fully defined. And we've had people recently asking what the fee is. And we don't have the methodology for creating the fee. So Doug Claggers on the Planning and Zoning Commission, who is an attorney in this area, specialized in this area, has been helping us create that missing piece. And that's now ready. A lot of work in that, actually. But Doug's had a big role in that. And rather than try to figure that out in the context of just a normal meeting, because it's detailed and it's very specific, what we're going to do is schedule a joint work session with the council and the planning commission to kind of go through those items. Most of the text stuff is very small. It's a sentence here, a sentence there. Clean a gap, fix a, fix an error. The TDR ordinance is a little more involved. It's several pages and, and it's, it's more, there's just more theory behind it. And I need to have the people in the room to explain the theory, too, as we're doing that. So just a heads up that that's coming in the next, again, the same email that I'm sending out about the schedule for the town hall meeting. I also have a request for those dates. And that is it for our work session. Anybody else have anything they want to talk about?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, I just, I wanted to ask the council a couple of questions. I had some topics and just, you know, if we're interested in discussing them, we'll schedule them. If we're not, then just, just let me know. You know, after the, well, just the approach with the studio. And, and everybody knows I had a town hall meeting. And came out of that was, you know, a lot of people would like to see a moratorium put in place on the development of that size right now for six months until we do review and look at some of the zoning things. And I happen to agree with them. I know we did the same thing after the brewery incident. Once there were close to 400 signatures, once the citizens knew what was going on, it was evident what the people wanted. So is that something you'd be willing to discuss, Troy? Something you'd look for?
Yeah, and a few questions. Is, is that still a possibility or are we just got some type of legal requirement we're having to meet by keeping the signs and stuff?
They can come back with that at any time, reapply.
Public hearing and closing. Okay, that's what that is. Okay, that, that explains that to me. Okay. But, but yeah, and, and I would like to just sail on those lines and just share it as a concern. Possibly we can have a robust conversation about it amongst the council members coming up at least. I mean, the reason I even got involved in all of this, I got pulled into it because of the brewery that came about, you know, a couple, three years ago, and everybody knows that. And it, it just seemed to be sprung upon the people in that area. And so they didn't know about it. And, and I am open to any type of input or discussion from staff or, or anything about how we can become a little more transparent about things on the horizon of that nature. That, that, I mean, I've gotten, I don't know, 75, 80 phone calls, you know, during that period of time. You know, what is this studio? What is it about? What's the details? And it, it just, it just seems like we can have maybe a more defined procedure in place of some type. Maybe, did we ever actually put into place maybe the need to send out letters to the people in that particular area? You know, did we put that into place? They all received letters in that area. Okay, well, maybe that's what, what got it all stirred up. I mean, that was, that's good that they came in. Yeah, they came and, and did their input.
So an item will be like, how do we keep people up to date on stuff? Then how's our process, all that?
I'm not, I'm not sure I see a need for a moratorium on development. Because I feel like it's a, we need developments in a sense, you know, the right developments that we can get a chance to review the applications and go through the process. I don't know. I just don't see a need for, I don't see a need.
I'm open to having a discussion because I guess there were some issues in seeing if there's a way to improve the process. But I'm a little hesitant about putting a moratorium on it.
And I'd like to go down on the record and that I'm not opposed to a moratorium at all. I think it might be a good thing.
I, I just know that, and Ruby, what do you say?
Well, anything that we can do to improve community where people have more information, we could, I would come for that.
Okay. Well, I would just say, you know, when I had a town hall meeting, I, I didn't even throw it together. I had some people throw it together. I was down in Florida and I told them, you know, if you put it together, I'll be there. And I drove back and there were roughly about 100 people there. And, you know, it, it was obvious that the community, the majority of it felt blindsided. You know, when I receive something in my book and I'm supposed to vote on it 30 days later, a project of that scale. And that's got people nervous here. You know, that's got people nervous here. Now, I don't know how much we mailed out. I know in the past I've said that, you know, a project of that scale, there, there should be a, something going out, being mailed out within a five-mile radius to let everybody know, you know? And another problem is, you know, we do have a paper. That is supposed to be our paper. I've been told several times that is the Chat Hills News. And last I checked, I, I'd consider that pretty good news. That news just did not make our paper. So, but either way, you know, another thing, too, a lot of citizens are wondering if we would be willing to move the start time of the work session in the council meeting to 6:30 just based upon where they're at, where they, where they work. It's just a nightmare getting here. Sorry, this might not be emotional. I'll read that when this is over. But is that, is that something you'd be in favor of discussing? I mean.
Yeah, the time.
I mean, it's only a 30-minute bump. Most of them were saying an hour. I said, this is.
Did y'all ever have, did y'all ever have 6:30s?
No, we used to have the workshop and the council meeting on the same day. We used to do them like that, but that. Like something like this and then roll into a council meeting when we were here at 3:00.
I've joined the ranks of Lori. I can't sit that long either anymore, so.
I think Lori's the reason why we still do this.
Me now, since I went over the edge on a tractor and it dropped me into the ground, so I can't sit there.
Yeah, you're right. You got to think about the staff, too.
Yeah, I, I said I wasn't sure we'd have many more people come. And I think maybe I'd like to see if our new AV system and the additional computer at City Hall might make a difference first. I think my only holdback is, it's not just us, it's staff, it's lawyer and.
We actually did start at 6:30 for a while because it carried on in my computer for like a year or two after we moved to 6:00 at 6:30. And there was one video I was almost late to because I had forgotten that my calendar was wrong, right? So I mean, like it's, changing the time is easy. It, it doesn't necessarily impact attendance. Regardless of what people say. What, what impacts attendance is if people think something interesting is going to happen, right? And so to your point about communicating, you know, making sure that people understand something interesting is happening. You know, I'll say, because I've heard you say this so many times in meetings, you know, you want to know what's coming on, what's going on, come to the meetings. And we did talk about that studio. And I mean, you know, again, I'm not calling anybody out for missing meetings because everybody has reasons at times to miss meetings. But, you know, people out there and some of the people up here miss some meetings. We talked about that. So, and I get it, you know, like there, there, there needs to be a better way to communicate that. But the thing, too, is it isn't real until somebody puts an application in, right? And that's the hard thing about these. People talk about stuff all the time. And 95% of them don't turn to anything.
That is true. But before we get to this point right here, we've got all those drawings and everything. That's been talked about a lot. And, you know, one thing that people had told me, they've made it very clear, is that if, if given the option with knowing where our city is at now, okay, with, with the development that is going on. Last I checked, I guess I'll check with you, Mike, but last I checked, I mean, with the, with some new development going in up there, with what Steve's doing, if this passes, you know, what is that, 300, 350 houses that are going to be permitted? That aren't even on the ground right now, okay? So point is, you know, we still live in a small community. And people do know each other. They really do. So that, that's why I mentioned earlier, when the gentleman was standing up here about the electronic system, what's wrong with archiving something? What's wrong with going back to, to your point, Tom, to simply say, to simply say, hey, listen, if you want to know if it was said or not, or if something was actually mentioned, or if it was actually discussed, there's a difference point making a statement in a full-blown discussion. All we got to do is push play, you know? And, and as long as I sit here, I've told people this for years, you know, my job is to serve the people. And so be it. You know, a lot of times I'm the guy that says what most people are thinking, I want to know. And I get it, but that's, that's my job. I'm not here to be your friend. If we become friends, that's just a bonus. But I mean, at the end of the day, you know, I can just tell you, after fielding literally 100 phone calls, and I mean 100 phone calls. And, you know, with my town hall meeting and stuff, it was, and that's why I kept it private, you know? So it could be an open discussion. And I'll go over more of that. But either way, that, that's why I think this stuff needs to be archived. We live in the city, like, like you said. I mean, Tom said it, I mean, we've all said it. We all hear stuff. Let's don't hear it anymore. Let's just put the facts on the table. And when you have the ability to do that and you don't, that's the reason people, you know, I, I don't get that. I don't, I don't participate in that ballgame.
I don't think anybody does. And the, the fact that you're saying it, like it makes it sound like somebody does. We're very open here about stuff.
I, I, I understand that. I didn't call out anybody. I just said, you know, people with yours that know about a studio. You know, there's a lot of things they don't know about. But either way, too, another thing that keeps coming up is that Chase Village over there. And I, and Lori, I don't know, is that on my line or your line? It changed. Is it, I mean, it's right on the line. But either way, you know, neighbors keep talking about, I don't know if it's camping, if they're renting spots or whatever they're doing. You know, they're tucked back in the woods. They want to know if they have a business license. It seems like they are up all hours of the night doing whatever they do. And some people just want some confirmation on that, you know, is this, is this a business? What is this? Because on any given day, there's, you know, 10, 15, 20 vehicles over there. And, you know, it was right across from the, the house that was busted right down the corner. Stoney found what a million dollars worth of drugs in there and stuff. And so, you know, people in that corner, that's Woodruff from Rivertown, right on the hill. But either, anyway, that's, you know, I'm, I've heard that about 10 times. So I guess the city could get some clarity on that. If he's got a business going there, what is he doing?
If he's got a business going there, what is he doing?
I mean.
There is no license.
You don't know what he's doing?
There's no license.
There's no license.
There's no business license.
Okay, so.
And, and, you know, he's a guy with 80 acres?
And there's been no.
Leave me alone.
Calls about it either.
Yeah, so, so Richie, I've heard the same thing some, from, you know, some residents too.
You said there's been no calls about it?
I asked Robbie if any complaints had been filed about it and he said they hadn't gotten any though. And.
And people complained to us.
They complained to us and on Facebook, but until it's, it's, it's an official complaint, it's complaint driven, the city doesn't read, you know, it's not their obligation to read Facebook.
Lori, I would have to respectfully disagree with that. If somebody comes to their council member, that's your job is to represent the people, whether they go to Robbie or not, you know, that's why I'm mentioning it. So maybe that from, from here, since we're a council-driven government led by the city manager, he's supposed to do the world of council, you're getting calls and I'm getting calls and other people are, maybe it's something they need to check into.
Which part of this is letting people want, do what they want to do on their land again?
Yeah, so, so there's that issue too. But so that's what I did, I checked with the city manager, there is no license, business license, there were no complaints registered against them. So outside of just going on people's private properties because there's a bunch of cars that are in your parking, if they're, I mean, can we come over to your house and check that out too? You know, that's where it.
Moving on Lori, moving on.
Okay.
All I need to hear.
I understand what you're saying.
You are saying so.
I assume.
I get into, you know, I, I, well, no, actually, actually I don't get it. I think that people have the right to call the council member and your job is to represent them. And by doing this, by mentioning this, whether they make a formal complaint to this man or somebody else, that is our job, is to bring it to city.
I, it's my job, I did it, but I am not.
No, wait, no, no. You don't get to cut people off.
Well, you don't have to respond. I didn't ask you to respond to the trucks on.
That's not how these meetings go.
Okay, that's not how they go. I think we've seen how they go. Anyway.
Richie.
Yes, we have.
That's all I got.
You blubiate for a while. Go on.
Go ahead.
Go on, you have more?
No, no, I'm good. I'm good. I think I've heard of that. I'm good.
All right. Does anybody else have anything interesting to say?
No, I think that my, my comment about some of this, and I appreciate your question and asking this, is I think during a town hall that's open, that's going to be open to everybody, if we can address some of the processes and talk through, just putting the facts out there, how this really works so that people that maybe don't know do learn more about it. Because I've had people ask a little bit that are interested and I think if we just lay it out, that would be the intent of that. But I don't like hyper focusing on weaknesses. And that to me is a little bit of what's going on. And that, I, I feel like those.
Can you explain that? I don't, I don't know what you mean by that.
Yeah, well.
You're saying hyper focus on weaknesses?
Well, and oftentimes Richie, there's a couple of things I believe that have been brought up that have been, I think it just takes us off track of the bigger picture. That's what, that's all I have to say.
Look, and, and the reality is too, I mean, this is just the, the nature of this and I've heard council people sit up here and say, nobody's going to tell me what I can do on my property. And, I mean, okay, and yet, we do a lot of that around here and people seem hyper focused on what their neighbors are doing on their property and certainly don't want anybody telling them what they can do on their own. And, and I don't get too excited by either side of that. When there's an actual complaint about something, when we know somebody's violating the law, that's one thing. When somebody shows me a Facebook post where somebody's saying, I'm going to start a school and there's no application and there's no school and, and all of that, I don't get too excited about it. Just like I don't get excited by people doing their, I hear, you know, all sorts of things that need special use permits that are in our community that predate our special use permits. We're not chasing them around, finding out if they've got one or not. It's not the way we do things here. It's not, hasn't been. And I don't think generally speaking, you advocate for that either?
No, I'm a big fan, do whatever you want on your property.
There you go.
But you know what? If people are calling me as an elected official saying, listen, there's some disturbances over here, whatever it is, it's my job to bring it forward to City Hall and then they take it from there. I'm not saying they can't do whatever they're doing on their property, I really don't care. But if you're bothering people, maybe you do need a phone call.
And I have had some of those as well, I agree. And, you know, even within the Serenby community and often I have to recommend that they call the police and file a noise complaint just to make sure it's on record and can be responded to. Because I have gone over and looked at some of that, large parties not allowed in short-term rentals. I can't do anything.
You don't have to inform?
No. I hear it. My idea was reaching a citizen's concern.
Right. And I, I actually have brought that up to Robbie, a couple of things. But I do tell the citizens, in order to get a response, and that we need it on record so that we can actually decide if there's, it's actionable or not.
It's, it's not very similar though from the people that come and complain because the neighbor behind them is shooting their guns all the time, right? And it scares them and the bullets are going over their heads and whatever. And whether or not we believe that's actually true, you know, the, the general consensus here has been generally speaking, live and let live, except not always. And, and that's where I have a hard time, right?
I just have a, just a curious question or, was there ever any advertisement that we've come across as far as commercially oriented about this place? Like, hey, come put up a tent, charge you so many dollars, anything in that nature? Have y'all come across that?
I was there for their grand opening there. Oh, okay. Yeah, they had, you know, he had art in his house that he wasn't charging anybody that I saw.
Oh, okay.
And, and just to let you know, so we, we first met the property owner, was it two years ago, Ruby, we were doing the first exhibit out here in the exhibit space for Black History Month and he was one of the exhibitors. And that's how we got invited into his soft opening. But we reiterated several times, if you're going to have an event, you need a permit or you need to check with Chief Rudd to make sure your home is, I don't know, checked out for events. And we could only do that so many times and then we just stopped going. So I'm not going to be on his email list anymore. You can lead a horse to, to water, but you can report if you're concerned, but.
Well, it's like, it's like the school thing, right? He said he wanted to do a school and so we brought him in here to meet with Mike and find out what the rules for schools were. That's the last I heard of that. And then I just saw on his Instagram page that he rented a space underground on the land and he's doing this thing there instead. I mean, like he's one of those people that has a lot of ideas and solves a million things, but I don't know how much of it actually ever happened. And, and, I don't know.
But maybe, maybe the discussion could be, again, at our, our, our next council retreat is about the, the whole complaint driven code enforcement. We discussed that before, is this still the way we want to go or do we want an official code enforcement? But just in the two years I've been on council, we've said no, just leave it like it is. And it's not a perfect system, but it's a system that the council wants.
I think I got the answer, the answer is just to tell the citizen, listen, I hear you, but you need to call City Hall and if it bothers you that bad, call the police. That's what I'm hearing.
That's what I understand.
Okay. Guess that works.
I don't have anything else.
Anything else, anybody?
Did want to thank Ruby Foster for the wonder, hosting the wonderful Chattahoochee Community Day at Bad Creek Nature Center. And had a great turnout from Fulton County, plenty of vendors, both of our incoming and outgoing Fulton County Commission, commissioners for our district. What do we have, Ruby? Maybe 70 people come. It was a really good event, good day.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Really? She's been really. Well, she's thanking me, I want to thank her because she did a lot of the work as well, so it wasn't just me, it was teamwork with everybody. And just trying to let people know about the Bad Creek Nature Center so they can get more exposure since they have been closed. So no credit goes to me, it just goes to everybody.
All right. See y'all Tuesday.